We're going to start the meeting.
Pete, Commander.
It is now joining.
I'd like to call the order, the regular monthly meeting of Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, Joliet Junior College, this is 5:25 in the boardroom and virtual. Uh, does Joan call the order?
Yes.
Joan, call the order, please.
Broderick?
Present.
Marin?
Present.
Garcia Guillen?
Present.
Mahalik?
Present.
Morales?
Here.
Dan O'Connell?
Present.
Washington?
Present.
And Wanderle.
Present. Welcome, everybody, at this second annual virtual thing here. I hope we don't have to do it too much longer. Uh, at this time, uh, would Mr. Carl Buck lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
With feeling now, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, 1.0.5, public comments. Joan, do we have any public comments tonight?
No request to speak before the Board, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, we will wait for about 30 seconds as you see if anybody wants to call in. We have no phone calls. No phone calls, Jim? No phone calls anywhere?
Nope.
All right. No public comments, moving on to business report. 1.1.1, Gallagher Annual Report.
Melinda Carter, are you on? Are you avail- would you like to introduce?
Yes, I am on. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Dave Torrey. He is our representative with Gallagher, and he's going to give us an update on our renewals. Dave?
Great, thank you. Um, hopefully, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, that's a good start. All right. Well, I did want to, uh, first off, just, uh, thank you for allowing your attendance. And certainly, uh, reiterate our commitment, uh, to Joliet Junior College and certainly, uh, on a go-forward basis, uh, working with Melinda and her team, as well as the insurance committee, especially during these challenging times that we're in. So, with that, um, I'll bring up a presentation here. Hopefully, you can see this as well. I'll try and make that big enough that it makes it easier to read. So, uh, let me know if you can see that presentation, and then we'll jump right in.
Yep.
Yes.
Good. Uh, so with that, um, you know, our job is certainly to continuously evaluate, uh, the college's plans and benefits against our proprietary benchmarking. Uh, we're always checking for effectiveness, uh, cost of the plans, as well as the competitiveness of the plans, uh, and also making sure that, uh, the colleges and the employees' needs are being met, uh, within those benefit plans. Uh, so with that, I think we're very well positioned this year. Um, and we'll, uh, start in on the renewal. The renewal that we have are for the medical, uh, and HMO plan that we have in place with Blue Cross, uh, as well as the, uh, prescription drug plan with Express Scripts. Uh, there's an element of that, uh, stop-loss with Symetra, as well as the dental with Blue Cross. So, those are the plans that, uh, are we doing. Uh, the rest of those contracts, we're all in the middle of. So with that, from a medical plan perspective, uh, good news this year. Um, certainly looking at, uh, the impact of the PPO and HMO plans. Again, very well positioned. Um, concentrated this year and focused on communication with employees, making sure that, uh, they understood the benefits, what was available, and certainly, uh, taking advantage of all the programs in place to help us, uh, control costs, as well as maximize their benefits. Uh, it's been very effective this year. Um, from a PPO perspective, you'll see later, uh, our recommendation, uh, for a no-budget increase on that. Uh, the HMO, we're actually getting a decrease, 3.7% this year. Uh, so those are very good numbers compared with, uh, average trend at 6% and certainly, uh, bode well for us. Our plan is self-funded, uh, so that means we pay our actual claim costs. Uh, so there is some savings in the plan. We'll talk about that, uh, in a minute and what our recommendation is for those savings. Uh, there's a couple options that, um, Melinda and her team are working through, uh, depending on what you decide with that this month. Uh, there's some, uh, great deal of savings with the, uh, Gallagher Alliance for the prescription drugs this year, uh, or, uh, a little lower savings, um, a $300,000 difference, uh, if we renewed, uh, with just the Express Scripts contract. So with that, a little volatility this year. Uh, certainly, uh, part of what we're recommending with those savings, you'll see later, um, in terms of a budget impact, uh, is leaving those budgets flat, uh, for the year. Um, you can see here, our, uh, COVID-19 projections, uh, we're running pretty close to, uh, Scenario 1, getting closer to Scenario 2, certainly in the, in the greater Chicago area. Um, so, uh, as you look at what that projects out, there's some COVID-19 cost to that, but there's also some mitigation that, uh, that we're seeing, uh, from a utilization standpoint. So, things like all those elective procedures that aren't getting done, uh, less accidents, et cetera. So, there's also some savings that go along with that. Uh, we're hopeful that, uh, you know, kind of worst-case scenario, we'll end up in this, uh, Scenario 4 here, and our costs, uh, from the COVID-19 will be close to, uh, our projected, uh, costs have been, uh, even without that. So, um, of course, there's some volatility to that, a lot of factors that will enter into that. Um, uh, in terms of the length of that, uh, pandemic, uh, how much that magnitude comes back, uh, do we have that come back in the fall? Uh, and then certainly, from a long-term perspective, uh, how many of those procedures that were avoided will be, uh, implemented in the fall, and certainly, uh, will we see that, again, that spike in the COVID-19? Uh, so for those reasons, you'll see our recommendation later to leave those, uh, savings on a, on a flat basis as we start to project out the, um, renewal. Dental and vision, there's a slight increase in the dental plan this year, uh, in the projections, um, with the 4.8% increase. Uh, again, you'll see that we're going to recommend a, a flat, uh, budget number for that, uh, certainly offset by, by the medical, and then a decrease in the vision, uh, projected vision expense of 4.6% as well. Uh, we are seeing, uh, some limited, uh, utilization in the dental and vision area as well with COVID-19. So, depending, again, on how long that, that persistent continues, uh, we, we think the, uh, impact of those, uh, slight increase in the dental and vision, certainly offset with the savings we're seeing in the medical plan, uh, will, uh, be, be, uh, taken care of in our, in our budget going forward. So, again, I mentioned our recommendations. Uh, we're recommending the, um, flat, uh, budget increase for the PPO. Uh, we'll take the 3.7% in our fully insured rates with the HMO. And then for the dental and vision, again, leaving those plans at a zero increase or, uh, flat to current, uh, for, for the dental and vision plans as well. Uh, we think that'll certainly keep, uh, our plans competitive. Uh, they're in line with, uh, our employee survey results this year, uh, where over 90% were certainly, uh, satisfied with the benefit choice, and certainly the, the way the benefit plans fit their needs. Uh, we think this will be good news for, for the employees, as, as well as the college, uh, leaving that flat. So, again, we'll continue to monitor that closely and, and work with, uh, the college and the staff closely, uh, on those plans. Uh, but, uh, certainly, uh, good positive news, you're in a very good position this year. Um, and then we'll certainly be working with the team, uh, as we work towards, uh, return to work and campus, uh, which is kind of our next step in, in the process here. So with that, we'll, uh, open it up to any questions, Jim.
What are the deductibilities on these programs for the health?
Uh, the deductibles on the programs, uh, for the PPO, um, I believe it's a $500 deductible that we have in place. Uh, and then the HMO, obviously, there's, there's no deductibles on the HMO. It's all structured with, with co-pays and co-insurance.
So, 500 for single or 500 for family?
500 for single.
What about for family?
I believe the, uh, multiplier is two times for family.
Which means it's $1,000?
Yes.
Those are really low, low, low deductibles.
Actually, this is Melinda. Actually, the deductible is $1,000. And, um, for family, it's $2,500.
So, it's $1,000 and $2,500?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, the new plan he's introducing is giving lower deductibles?
No, I apologize. It's, it's staying the same.
It's staying the same. So, it's $1,000 and $2,500?
Yes.
That's, that's still low, just so, I mean, that, from those of us that are in Corporate USA, those are low. Could we have done anything better if we did a little bit higher?
Well, those are always, uh, options that we're walking through with the, uh, with the staff and Melinda and her group, uh, certainly, uh, bouncing that off of, uh, the benchmarking that we do, uh, much more specific to higher education, as well as, uh, what's happening in the area and, uh, employers of your size. Um, obviously, if you're shifting cost to employees, uh, yeah, you can save some dollars there, uh, but the $1,000 is, 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 uh, in line and competitive with what we're seeing with other higher education institutions.
Yeah, but you know, the problem I have when you say that is, we are all subjected to health, and we are all equal. If I'm in the banking industry, I have to go by what is Corporate USA, no matter what the segment of, of, of work is. I hate when you say higher education, because I still think we all should be lumped together, and that's my opinion on it, and that's why I feel that these deductibles should be higher, because I've watched what Corporate USA has done to us, and we keep getting higher and higher deductibles. And I, and I just think it's unfair that, if we look at it and we look at the salaries and that, I think it's commensurate that we should be the same as Corporate USA, and that's my opinion on it.
I have a question. This is Trustee Morales, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, I do understand what Trustee Broderick is, is saying, um, having a human resource background, also, working with benefits and plans for staff in corporate America. People are looking at a $5,000 deductible for a single person and, um, you know, higher family deductibles, and they're also paying high premiums, um, on a monthly basis. Um, it do, are we offering any kind of a tiering, like, for people that have a annual salary that maybe is like, under $40,000, they would pay a certain premium, between like, 40 and 70, they would have a different premium, and then 70,000 and up? You know, some, that's just an example. Is that, is that, I don't know that I saw that anywhere in this presentation. Does your company set anything like that up for any other, um, organizations?
Our benefits plans are, um, uh, tiered based on contribution. Uh, this is Melinda talking, sorry. So, always, um, I don't have it with me, but it's always been that way in terms of, um, employees making less, uh, pay less, and employees making more, pay more for the, for the coverage. Um, it's not tiered, though, based on deductible. And part of it also is that, he mentioned the insurance committee and also mentioned our union, so these are subject to negotiations. So, any changes on deductibles, any changes to our medical plan, um, do, uh, must be negotiated and go through that process as well. So, we do present it before the insurance committee each year, we do present it before the unions, um, and, you know, I think in my last presentation, that was back in November, we talked about what was presented in terms of, um, changes at that time, when we were trying to look at short-term disability, um, needing to be negotiated through that process.
Well, I think we also brought up at that time, Melinda, when I asked about the 80% versus the 90% versus the 100%, which is the higher percentage of premium that you pay for the 100, the 90 you bear with and you have a lower, a little bit lower, and the 80 you have a little bit low, you have much lower. I don't see any of that. I just see it looks like 100% all the way through. I don't see anything of an 80 or a 90% presentation on this one.
Well, actually, uh, that, so the 80 and 90%, after employees reach their deductible, um, uh, the plans will pay 80%, and then the employee pays the 20%. That's the co-insurance. So, that's how that's structured. So, you reach your deductible, then you end up paying the 80%. Um, the plan pays 80%, the employee pays 20%, and then there's, um, out-of-pocket maximums.
But still, when you're looking at this, and you're looking at the deductible being $500, when I know my individual, and I'll give Maya's example, is 1,500, my family is 7,500. Now, to me, I am getting the 90-10 because of the way it's, it's structured, and I'm with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and I'm with a big organization, a big bank. I just don't get under, I just don't understand why there's not a higher deductible with lower cost for the school to be paying, or for the individual.
Well, and if, for that to happen, then that would have to be a matter of, uh, the subject of negotiations, for us to present that in some cost models to be, um, adopted by the insurance committee and the unions.
Well, then, when we brought it up in November, was it brought back to the insurance, insurance group? Because that was brought up. This is a hot button to me, because we, as the general public, pay a lot more than you guys do. And if your committee does not have any outside people from the outside on it, then it's very jaded that it's just your way that you want it, not us who are seeing how we're, how we are approving this or not approving this.
Well, in November, we had already, um, negotiated the faculty contract, and so it would have to come back through, uh, the next negotiation cycle, or, or reopen negotiations with the unions.
When is the next cycle?
Um, it's going to be, we just closed those contracts, so you're, you're talking another three years?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, um, that the Board has really given enough information, or, I'm sorry, not information, but maybe, um, I, I, this is a hot topic, and I know it's been brought up multiple times, and I think we need to really build a relationship. The rapport has to get stronger when we're at the negotiating table, because I feel like it's, we're getting told that this is what's going to happen, and we're not really being given an option as to, you know, how to move forward and, and how to really structure this in a way that's, that's better for, for, for the staff, for the school, for the college, for everybody. It, it's kind of one, a one-sided conversation. I don't feel that it's been, uh, where we've been given the opportunity to really, um, negotiate. It's already been a negotiated done deal, is my opinion on how that's been hap- happened, and I'm not, I'm not pleased with the process.
This is Trustee Washington. Coming from corporate, um, from management and also, uh, staff position, benefits are always bargained for. Um, so, and, and I don't want to push this aside, but aren't we kind of kicking the can down the street? It's already been negotiated. It's already been bargained for. So, there's nothing more that we can do at this point, other than accept what's gone and then look at it at a later date, because, um, insurance, again, benefits, be it insurance or any vacation time or anything else, is always up to the bargaining committees. True, it is, but we have brought this up many times prior to you coming on the Board. This has been a hot concern, and I know Alicia and I both have voiced our concerns about it. So, for us to keep on it, yes, it is a concern that we've, we voiced prior to, that we should have been at least heard and listened to, and I feel that we fell on deaf ears, and that's how I feel about it.
But you're right, Betty. At this point, it, you know, this is the time to talk about it, because it's up on the, um, it's on the agenda, um, and this is the time that we have to have these discussions. Maybe the timing is off, and we need to have them months before it comes to a vote, because at this point, it's a done deal. You're right. You're right.
Well, fellow trust, fellow trustees, I would say that this should be put up as a red flag a few months before the next negotiations, so we can all look at what we can do to alleviate the situation and some of the concerns that the trustees have, and work with the bargaining units at that time, and try to negotiate a, uh, a different settlement, if you will.
Robert, this was brought up before, when we talked about it last year. That's why I'm very adamant about the fact that when it was brought up last year, we were told to, to make a note of it, you guys were going to bring it, they were going to bring it up. This was disregarded to us. I have been specifically asking, because I know what we in Corporate USA are going through, and each year, we get increases, increases, increases. And I am not on the educational group, I am on Corporate USA. I don't care. We're all in the subject to health issues. We're all subject to pain out of our pocket. Why are you guys, why, why is it less for them and more for us? It doesn't make any sense. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. I, I brought it up, and I feel like deaf ears have been here.
I understand, I understand what you guys are saying, but it's kind of a moot point right now, because it's, it's said and done. So, all we can do is move forward and take a hard, a harder look at it at the next session.
Right. And what I would, I would just like to interject to say that the, the cost of the college will not increase which, this year, which is positive, and when we were going through negotiations prior to, we did bring up the issues and items to the Board. So, I have a note going forward that we will highlight the insurance specifically, but we were transparent when we went through the negotiation process. Thank you.
If I can, if I can ask all the other people on the virtual, um, what we're doing here tonight, if you could please, we're getting a lot of static in the boardroom here. If you could please mute your, uh, speakers until you need to say something, because we're getting, we're getting all kinds of static here. I would appreciate it, thank you very much. Next item, Dr. Mitchell, update on Rock Run Crossings?
Right, I'd like to ask Rob Gallagher to just talk a few minutes about what's going on with Rock Run Crossings.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and good evening, Board. Um, just a couple of points I wanted to bring you up to date with regarding Rock Run Crossings. Um, just to refresh everyone's memory, um, Rock Run Crossings is a development that is being planned, uh, just west of Joliet Junior College, uh, that will include retail, medical offices, park space, some residential space, and also a movie theater. And, um, I am going to share my screen, just to kind of show you exactly where it's going to be. So, um, this is just an overhead view of Joliet Junior College. You can see it in your upper right-hand corner. Um, just to orient you, uh, below is Interstate 80, um, running north-south, obviously, is Interstate 55, and Hobart Road is the, um, road just to the east of Joliet Junior College. And so, Rock Run Crossings is, uh, notified by this yellow box that, that is just barely to the, uh, to the west of JJC. It's literally right in our back, literally right in our backyard. And so, I do want to say, this is not, this is not an architectural drawing, this is just me drawing a box in Google Earth, so this is not to scale perfectly, but it gives you an idea of exactly where the development is. And so, when this was being envisioned, there was a lot of conversation, oh, by the way, also, there will be a new interchange, uh, that will be placed, uh, in Interstate 55, near where the interstate, uh, where Route 59, uh, exchange is right now. Um, and there was a lot of discussion about how this would connect with Hobart Road, east-west. And so, there were a number of options that were being considered. There was the, there was the northerly route, which would have taken you up north to Hobart, and then to Hobart, or, north to McDonough, uh, to Hobart, that was being considered. It was another route that was being considered on our, as, as the trustees who were on at the time will remember, along the northern, um, edge of our campus. And ultimately, where it was landed was that it would be connecting with, with Olympic. And so, Olympic is the road that connects from Hobart, um, goes to the south, and then ends right here in this, um, in this business district. Uh, Olympic will extend now, um, to, uh, the, and will connect in, uh, to the new interchange, and also will serve, uh, the new Rock Run Crossings. And so, the first update I wanted to give you was, um, related to the intersection of Centennial and Olympic, right as you leave our campus. Um, there's going to be some improvements, and Dr. Mitchell and I met with IDOT, as well as, um, some representatives from the city of Joliet, and just wanted to bring everyone up to speed on that. So, now I'm going to share a different screen, so you can kind of see what that looks like. The interchange of Olympic and Centennial will be widened as a result of the additional traffic that will be placed on Olympic Boulevard. And so, essentially, you can see, uh, as noted by this blue line, there will now be a right turn lane that will connect, um, from Centennial and will head, um, southwest on Olympic. Um, there will be the need to relocate one of our signs, um, that's over here, it's a wayfinding sign, and we'll have to, uh, relocate that, which is not going to be a major problem. Um, and, and the right turn lane will essentially serve three to four cars in queue as it's waiting to turn right on Olympic. And then we'll be some other, uh, issues and, 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 and there will be some other, uh, regrading that will happen to, uh, resolve some drainage issues to accommodate that. And, um, and I have another view here to show you, just to give you a better idea. So, this is Olympic, and you can get a feel for where this right turn lane will be placed. The median will be, will remain intact. And so, there were some concerns that we had with regard to, um, the, the width and the length of the right turn lane, but, but they were able to resolve those to our satisfaction. So, that is the first point, and, I'll share. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that there is a, um, a TIF that is being planned by the city of Joliet, um, for the Rock, to accommodate the Rock Run Crossings. Um, the TIF will essentially, uh, the, the revenue that gets generated from the TIF will, uh, will be used to fund the interchange that will connect, um, Rock Run Crossings with Interstate 55, and it will also provide other roadway and other infrastructure improvements in that general area. Um, currently, the college is receiving, um, for that property that I showed you in the last screen, about $600 in property taxes annually from that land, um, in real estate taxes. And, um, when the TIF expires in 23 years, um, it will generate a total of, an estimated $230,000 of property tax revenues. And so, um, you know, we have TIF, uh, there, there are many TIF meetings that we go to. Um, the, the college does not have, in order to, 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 uh, to vote no on a TIF, it, it, the only way, the only legitimate way to vote no is to essentially, uh, make a statement that it does not qualify to be a TIF. It doesn't matter whether we agree with the TIF, whether we like the business that's being supported, um, that is not what's in the law. The way, the only way you can vote no is, is does the TIF qualify, um, under the, under the statute? And in this case, it, it does. So, I just wanted to make everyone aware that that TIF will exist. We are not foregoing a significant amount of property taxes today, because we only get $600 from that land, and in 23 years, when the TIF expires, it will be generating significantly more property taxes. Are there any questions?
Rob, what will the, uh, new property, property value be brought into the equation for our, figuring out our taxes for the year?
Um, it will increase EAV by $80 million.
Can you explain that, how that new property affects the, uh, the amount of money we bring in by chance to the people that don't understand it?
Sure. So, so the basic premise of a TIF is, it basically says, um, to all the taxing bodies who are impacted by the TIF, that we are going to hold your property tax revenue flat for the duration of the TIF. So, in this case, the property tax revenue that we will receive from this property will remain at $600 for the next 23 years. Now, the real estate owners will pay, uh, more and more prop, in the way of property estate owners will pay more and more prop, in the way of property taxes. As the value of that land increases, they will see their property tax bills go up. And, but, but our revenue as a taxing body does not go up. And the difference between what they pay and what the college receives is called the increment. And essentially, what that means is that's money that's set aside by the county to, to fund the, the infrastructure improvements for the TIF. And so the, the taxing body pays more, we get less, the infrastructure improvements are paid for. And over the course of 23 years, the increment grows and grows and grows. And then once the, the TIF expires in 23 years, that's when the full realization will be, will be captured by the college. Does that make sense?
I think my question was more directed towards, isn't new property, doesn't it affect the equations of our power tax? Isn't that dropped from?
I'm sorry, Trustee Melo, could you repeat that?
I thought that new property was, was brought in and it was figured into the equation when they're figuring out how much property tax do we receive into the CPI. Doesn't that get subtracted out?
No, it actually doesn't. So our property tax bill will grow the same percentage that CPI grows. And then over and above that, any new development, new property, whether it be a rooftop, whether it be a business, any new property that comes online is new property tax growth over and above what the CPI growth provides to us. In this instance, because there will be a TIF, assuming the city council approves it, there will be a TIF in place. So we will not see that growth from new property during the duration of the TIF.
Question, Trustee Melo. 23 years.
Yes.
Why 23?
That's the, that's what the statute provides. And so that is, every TIF that I'm aware of, and I believe every TIF that exists, has to be 23 years. You may recall, a year or so ago, a couple of, the Village of Rome, we will, and City of Joliet, Joliet came to the college requesting an extension beyond the 23 years. And that required a board action to grant that extension. But any new TIF is by definition going to be 23 years.
In regards to all those road situations that you addressed, is any of that related to the North Point issue of the, it has nothing to do with North Point?
No, not at all.
This is independent of North Point's roads that they're going to be putting into our area of their intersection?
It is. From what I understand, the, the, the primary reason for this interchange is, is twofold. One is to serve the crossroads, I'm sorry, the Rock Run Crossings retail development, and then the, and the residential areas that survive, that surround that, that will surround that. And secondly, to relieve some pressure off of Route 52 and some traffic pressure from Route 52 to bring that southward to serve Shorewood and then Shanahan as well.
And when is this all supposed to take place? As far as timing with North Point's tearing up of Hobalt intersection and then this? Because it seems like we're going to have a lot of issues with traffic of getting our students to and from the campus, which causes a concern because that's an enrollment issue then?
Yeah. They have not provided specific timeframes in terms of when this will happen. I sit here and question whether the, the COVID-19 pandemic and the related economic impact of that will impact the time, the timeframe. But at this point, they have not provided us with specific timeframes of when the interstate project will begin and when the retail development will begin. About a year ago, they did announce that the theater will, this was kind of announced as a, as a big deal, as their first tenant, the theater will be regal theaters that will, 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 will be there. But I don't know, Dr. Mitchell, if you have any information from where you said in terms of timing, but I'm, I'm not aware of any announcements that they've made in terms of when they will begin construction on any of that.
Right. When we had the meeting with IDOT, they, this was phase one. And so they brought the plan to us to ask us for our input. What I was pleased to see originally when Rock Run approached the college a while back, if you remember when they wanted to put that roadway into the north of our property, you know, I had expressed some of our concerns at the college that regardless of where the road ended up finally being approved, that, you know, we had two concerns. One, first and foremost, was our students and their safety. And so that talk of Centennial Drive and Olympic Boulevard, I was concerned about the safety of our students entering and exiting the college. That road, although I believe the speed limit is 30 miles per hour, I expressed my concerns because, because the traffic does go quite fast. So I had asked for a stoplight at that point. So I was pleased to see that they included that and then, you know, expanded the intersection. The other issue that we asked about was, you know, once they started the development, that not to shift all their deer population on the college campus as well. So hopefully, they're addressing that. But they have been very receptive, very positive working with the college. We're very pleased with the partnerships. They've come to us with each decision for it, to seek our approval before they move forward.
Was this IDOT or the, or the city council?
It's the city IDOT. There was a, there was a group. I don't have all this, all the names, but Joliet was on the call as well.
Joliet was. What about in regards to the North Point of tearing up the intersection at Hobalt? Were we involved in that at all?
No. As far as North Point with the intersection, we have been involved in the conversations. Eventually, when they build the bridge from Hobalt Road and they go south into the intermodal, you know, they had reached out and they were seeking information from all the, you know, the higher education municipalities at that time and the businesses. But as far as anything specifically related to North Point, no. It was just the divergent diamond that they're looking at. And again, at that time, I expressed again our concerns for the students and our employees when they're entering and exiting off of I-80 because, you know, for those of you that have been here, you know, especially at the beginning of the semester, we've had where our traffic is backing up on I-80, which is extremely dangerous for our students. And so we continue to keep them, you know, again, our students and our employees at the forefront in all those conversations. So, and even today, I was participating in an I-80 corridor planning meeting today. And we, you know, they were provided, we were provided with updates as well. But no, JJC definitely has a voice at the table for all of these projects.
Judy, correct me if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that Hobalt Bridge, everything going to be south of Route 6?
Correct. It's south of Route 6.
So it's going to be south of Route 6, south of 80?
The bridges, but the divergent diamond will be here. Correct. Yes.
And I guess that's where my focus and concern is. If this is going on, what Rob's presented to us, and then we also have the Hobalt tear-up, I'm concerned about, and I include trustees too, because I think Mr. Dan was in an accident as well as former trustee Dieters was in an accident. It's for all of us. We are all at risk.
Absolutely.
You know, and I, I think that's the biggest fear we have, where we need to know and coordinate when North Point's going to do their thing and when this work's going to be done on this road too, so that it's not all torn up at the same time. Because we all know that traffic problems happen when there's a lot of construction.
Exactly. And that's why it was important for Rob to come to you today to talk about, you know, the proposal for Centennial and Olympic, just to keep you apprised of what's going on. When we receive more information about the divergent diamond, we'll, we'll absolutely share that as well. But at this point, we have provided them a great deal of input. They continue to ensure us that our students will be safe, our employees and the traffic coming to and from the college and the businesses, you know, will be one of their first priorities. But as far as timelines, you know, the, the, the bridge and the divergent diamond have, have been pushed off a couple of years at best. And so we'll continue to, to keep you updated as we hear additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the next item, 1.1.3, the summary report.
Okay. I'd like to invite Dean Bob Morris to provide the board with a brief update as we close out SEM 2.0 and kick off SEM 3.0. So Bob?
Well, good evening, everybody. And again, I'm always appreciative of the chance to address the board, especially on the, on the topic of enrollment. The SEM 2.0, we are sunsetting now. And coincidentally, we're doing so on the eve of my second anniversary at JJC. So tomorrow begins year three and SEM 3.0 begins. So I guess that's a wonderful coincidence. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the process of how we are creating SEM 3.0 and how we are taking it in a little bit of a, a different direction as, as things continue to change. So what we chose to do, and I think it was a really sound approach, was, and we're fortunate that the college implemented its new strategic plan within the past year. And so what we wanted to make sure of was that the strategic enrollment plan lined up and worked well with the college's strategic plan. And in doing so, what we did was we identified five key themes. And tonight's presentation will be pretty much at a higher level. We won't get into the, the nuts and bolts of every, every strategic initiative and tactic that we'll be doing. But it's important for me to communicate to the board where we're going to be putting our focus. So certainly, one theme in a strategic enrollment management plan is always admissions and recruiting. Getting the students in, being strategic about who we're going after, how we're getting them to make the decision to attend JJC. And of course, once they're here, it's equally important to get them to persist from term to term, all the way through graduation. So retention, again, it's a really important theme to consider as well. Why we're here? We're here for the academics. So all strategic enrollment management plans need to really focus on academics as well. Community engagement is also, there's something that's extremely important. We are more than just an institution of higher learning. We are a member of the Joliet community, and being an active member of the community certainly impacts enrollment as well. And then as we all learned over the past couple of months, it's really important for us to continue to push to being a virtual campus. So in terms of admissions and recruiting, I'm just going to break them down sort of theme by theme and again, keep it a little bit of a higher level. These are some of the strategic goals within admissions and recruiting. We want to strengthen targeted recruiting practices and processes. For the first time ever in the fall of 2019, the college had a recruiting plan, a college-wide recruiting plan. That's going to be a really important thing going forward as well. Enhancing structured outreach efforts to prospective students. As we migrate to a new CRM, and while we're still utilizing our current colleague CRM, we're going to be much more strategic about how we're reaching out to students and communicating with them. And then improving onboarding. Again, so many students make the decision to come here and then for one reason or another, they're, they're, they are faced with barriers along the way. So we want to make sure we're removing those barriers. So some of the objectives, again, I touched on the yearly recruitment plan. It's really important that that is a college-wide recruiting plan. We have so many wonderful faculty members, staff members, departments that are all recruiting. And it's important that everything sort of is encompassed in a college-wide recruiting plan. So we're going to continue to write one and build one every single year. We all know that from our demographics and from my last presentation a couple of weeks ago, that, that the Hispanic population continues to grow. So we want to make sure that we are really focusing on that population, making sure that we have the services that they need, making sure that we have the outreach that they can utilize, making sure that we're making that, that onboarding experience, that matriculation experience a positive one. And then we all know as well, we're becoming a college that is focusing on guided academic pathways. That is a big part of recruiting as well. We want to make sure that our high school counselors are familiar with guided academic pathways, that our students understand how that benefits them and how that can sway them to come here. And then we want to continue to build a strong admissions team. And this is something that's very exciting to me. We want to begin using student ambassadors. We are building a plan right now to create a new student ambassador plan that can really help the college and provide some professional development opportunities for some of these students that really want to lend their services to JJC and reach out to other students in the high school, to reach out to community organizations, things like that. In terms of retention, we had Dean Case and Lesbita come into our Strategic Enrollment Management Committee to talk about retention as we were building this component of the plan. We really need to continue improving persistence and completion rates. Those students that show up in the fall, let's make sure they register again in the spring. Let's make sure they're going all the way through to graduation. And along those lines, it's going to be extremely important as well to make sure that we've got the right advising model in place. We all know that in the past year, we completely revised the academic advising model. Well, now as we go into year two, it's going to be really important that we look at that from a recruiting and from an admissions and from a retention perspective, so that our students again have the support services that they need. So some of the objectives under retention, again, it's about looking at some of these undecided students. Our undecided student population continues to be our largest population. A lot of students come here because they're undecided. So what does that mean? It means we have to, as a college, we have to help them. We have to give them the resources they, that they need to help make those decisions, to help find a direction so they can choose the right academic program. The new student orientation program will be a big part of retention. Again, it's about eliminating that summer melt, making sure that those students get off on the right foot, creating transfer opportunities that encourage the completion of the associate degree. We all know that it's great for students to transfer to a four-year school, but let's have them do so with a completed JJC credential. Sometimes we can even do so by having them take credits beyond the associate degree, as I know you've learned about from past presentations before. And then academic intervention's a big deal as well, because these students, when they struggle, they need to know that they have resources available to them. But additionally, we as a college, we need to help identify who these students are, who's at risk, and making sure that we are upfront and centered with them about these, or about these resources. Academics. Academics, again, that's why we're all here. We want to make sure that we continue to expand programmatically. Whatever the industry in the local Joliet area is, is saying that we need to prepare students for, we need academic programs that can help do that. We all know that our dual credit population continues to grow at really strong rates, about 11% last fall and this spring. That can be expanded even more. But then as you look at expanding dual credit, then we also have to make sure that we are working hard to get these dual credit students to become degree-seeking students at JJC. And then expanding scheduling options to meet the accessibility expectations. Again, this is a big deal. Our, our student population, as you saw from the presentation a couple of weeks ago, about 75% are now part-time because they're working. So are we offering courses, programs in a way that is aligning with their schedules? The days of, if you know that they will come, unfortunately, those are long gone. We have to build our academic models to meet the needs of our students. And the SEM 3.0 will continue to work with our academic departments to make sure that we're going to do that. Again, it comes back to academic pathways, making sure that our students are degree-seeking, aligning our schedule with the part-time population, and then really focusing on transfer agreements that, that enforce the completion of the associate, and even go so far as to be those three plus one agreements where students can take 90 credits here at JJC. Obviously, that can have a really positive impact on enrollment. Community engagement. We had Kelly Rottertonelli come into our Strategic Enrollment Management Committee meeting and talk about community engagement, because again, it's, it's important for us to be a productive member of the community. We all know there's a lot of events going on out there, perhaps not so many this summer, but there are incredibly productive opportunities for JJC to be a member of the community. So what does that look like? How do we make sure that we are a part of the right groups, the right social organizations, the right civic organizations? How do we make sure that we're out there in the community? So we had some really good discussions on that. And some of the objectives that we will be looking at there is, you know, building an engagement calendar so that we know when these events are, so that we can get volunteers from the college. And even more importantly, that we want to make sure that everybody understands why the event's happening and what, what JJC's expectations are. Is it a recruiting generating event? Is it more just for visibility? Is it more to meet new people and network? Having goals and having objectives for all of these events is going to be a really important thing for us. Student ambassadors, I talked about this a few minutes ago, but I see this as a wonderful future opportunity for JJC. Taking some of these students, the cream of the crop, so to speak, that really wants to get out in the community, that really want to work as mentors perhaps to some high school students or become part of civic organizations. Pairing some of these perhaps with some of our current ambassadors can really be a great thing both for the college and for these individuals. So getting these student ambassadors out there, I think, will be a great opportunity for us as well. And then continuing to invite groups to utilize JJC's facilities when we're able to do so. The more exposure we can get to our campus, I think the more people that will be interested in having their, their sons, their daughters attend. And then lastly, the fifth theme is the strategic initiative to build a virtual campus. And boy, over the past few months or a couple of months, we've really worked hard to do this, but there's so much work to be done. We want to make sure that our support services are all going to be offered virtually, that as many JJC courses and programs can be offered online and remotely. And then it goes beyond that, making sure that our faculty, that our staff, that we have the training, that we have the ability to offer these services remotely. So we are, again, have come a long way, but there's still ways to go in terms of improving that. We're getting a feel for that right now in terms of where some of the challenges are, what technologies perhaps work better in the office. what technologies perhaps work better in the office, that we need to maybe find a different way to use remotely, or what do we need to absolutely be on campus for? These are some things that we're working through now, but as we go into the next couple of years, they're going to be even more important. Also, I think it's extremely important to reach out to the students and to educate them on what online learning means for Joliet Junior College. As we all know from my presentation a couple of weeks ago, everybody's on a level playing field, everybody's offering online courses. So what's setting JJC apart? Why is our style of online learning better? Why can it help the students still reach their educational goals? Again, it all ties back to enrollment. And I think that as we continue to improve in these areas, we'll certainly get better. So as you see from the presentation, there's a lot in there, and there's certainly a lot there that will still be built. Again, each individual objective is going to have tactics and measurable outcomes. And those measurable outcomes are going to be really important so we can track the success, whether it's conversion percentages from inquiry to applicant, or whether it's conversion percentages from applicant to enrolled student, or whether we're tracking the number of community events we're entering, or we're tracking the number of courses that we have online. This is a comprehensive approach to enrollment. And I believe one of the things that's most important in today's world in terms of online or in terms of an enrollment plan is that it needs to be fluid and it needs to be flexible, so that no matter what happens externally or what circumstances arise, we'll still be able to progress and we'll still be able to do what we set out to do in terms of making the college stable from an enrollment and revenue perspective. And at this time, I will be glad to answer any questions that you guys have.
Question.
Bob, can you stop sharing presentation?
Yes, I sure will.
Hi, Mr. Morris. My question is, how are we expanding programmatically? What specific steps are we taking to expand?
Well, I don't have any specifics in terms of two to three years down the line yet, but I know that we just added a medical assisting program, for example. And the part of the SEM plan that ties into that is increasing the dialogue that exists between enrollment management and academics, so that we can look to see what Joliet is needing, what our transfer partners are needing, what other industries that are coming to town are going to be needing, and then, making good decisions there. Sometimes, I feel like in an institution this big, that academics can act as a silo from enrollment management. And the way that I'm proposing this in SEM 3.0 is that it's more of a partnership between enrollment and academics, so that we are looking for ways to support academics when they are looking to expand. So I provided a couple of examples, I'm sure more will come down the line, but it's more of a collaborative approach at this point.
I agree. I think sometimes academics does act more like in a silo, and we do need to build that, continue to work together better between academics and administration per se. That was one thing. And then, the next thing I was going to ask is, how, I didn't see anything in your plan about accountability with all these metrics. I know in everywhere I work, we're on production, we have metrics and goals, and if they're not met, there's accountability. So I just didn't see anything about accountability in your report.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point. And you would not see it in this particular point. Again, it's more of a higher level, but when you get down into each specific tactic and measurable, that's where the accountability comes in. That's where we have to have extremely thorough and effective training, so that our staff knows what the accountable measures are, so that they know what the expectations are, and that we can hold individuals accountable, we can hold departments accountable. And that can go into a lot of different areas. So again, I'm glad you brought that up. It can go into broader areas such as customer service. It can go into more specific areas of, I'm going to increase my contact level at Plainfield High School by three faculty members. I mean, there are different measurables that we can implement with each objective and with each tactic, and it's at that point that you can really hold the individuals accountable, because they know what the expectations are. So again, that's part of what we're building now. And when the completed plan is finished, we'll certainly be able to share more.
Okay, thank you, because that's, I think, something we need to consider when you're doing. I know you're responsible for doing evaluations for your staff, and that's where the accountability comes in, is when you do the evaluation, you know? So I know you said it was higher up, but I think even at your level with the staff that you're managing, you know, we have to, everyone reports to somebody. And if we're not meeting enrollment goals, or we're not generating a healthy cash flow, then everyone needs to be accountable.
I certainly agree.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. In regards to the apprenticeships, are we working with any of the local businesses that are here to develop that for student enrollment? I didn't see that in the SEM, so I was like questioning, because when we look at what the impact of funding is and what they're trying to do to, you know, lower the amount of hours so that they get, you know, their funding, the kids are able to get funding for that, are we doing anything in relationship to that?
Yeah, I certainly think we will be, certainly doing more of that. In terms of the specific partnerships with businesses, I think that's a real opportunity for us to grow, especially with the businesses that are in the area. And it's a matter sometimes of working with the HR offices and putting together specific programs that our students can participate in with some of these local businesses. So again, you may not have seen it on a particular slide tonight, but one of the positions that we will be filling, one of the recruiting positions, because we had a promotion from within, we're going to have one of our recruiters focus more on some of the business opportunities. Does that address what you were going for there?
Yeah, because that's what I'm looking at, because once they are lowering the amount for them to get financial aid, I think we have to look at that, because the biggest issue was, we've got to get away from determining that those that qualify are for four-year universities. They have to look at what's beyond, which is what our goal is, to get more enrollment, so that our students can get either the two-year degree or the certifications that they need in order to work with our companies, so that they can go on and make a healthy salary and be very, you know, good in their job situations if they can't go on to a four-year university. So we have to look at the impact of what we can do to increase that enrollment, because that's what we need to feed into, because that's what we see in our generations right now, that they're looking for the short-term, you know, the automotive, the diesel drivers, you know, the CDLs and all that stuff, the welders. All of those things are what's becoming now what they're looking at. And that's what we, across the board for ACCT, is looking at when we see what they're doing with, you know, trying to lower the amount of hours needed, so that they can get, you know, financial aid.
Yeah, I think that that's an excellent point. And I think that when you're looking at the prospective population of students that would consider JJC, you know, not everybody has dreams of Harvard and Stanford. We have a lot of students, a lot of folks out in the community that are looking for that credential that they can earn in a short period of time for an affordable tuition, where they can get aid and they can get out and get their job and start supporting their families. So that's certainly a big part of it. I agree with you.
Thank you.
I have another question. So this is kind of piggybacking off of what Trustee Broderick mentioned. So there are a lot of companies, factories, like Along Route Six over by the racetrack. I mean, we're seeing more and more warehousing employers in our local area, by the Elwood area. And a lot of the staff, and I've worked at some of these places, that's why I'm sharing this information. And a lot of the staff want to be promoted to a higher position, but they don't have the skill set or the degree. And what I would hear when I worked in HR in these facilities is that they really would like to have had like a class offered at their job to give them the skills for like maybe process automation technician, you know, artificial intelligence. They, I think that partnership, we need to really look into that and focus on how we can get maybe, if they can't come to us, we need to go to these facilities, if that's what it's going to take to increase our enrollment right now. If they can, and they have a cafeteria, they have different, not just a cafeteria, but they have boardroom, they have boardrooms where they can, you know, make into a classroom, if they do have it, but maybe we just need to look into that a little bit further and see how we can send an instructor to maybe help them or take a poll of who needs what skill set and, you know, develop a class for these employees. Because a lot of companies offer the tuition reimbursement, and they don't take advantage of it because they don't have the time, they're working crazy shifts. But if we came to them, I know that would definitely help.
And especially with this COVID situation happening that I see on our end of it, I see a lot of changes in employment situations from the borrower, the co-borrower, which is the wife now, having to go back and get back in the workforce. So we need something to even drill on that, because I think you're seeing a shift of the whole business economy situation shifting. And you're going to see families that are going to need to have more development in their skills. And I think you're going to see that as a crucial area of getting everybody started back again in the workforce too.
Yeah, I would concur with both of your comments. And I touched a little bit on earlier about saying, you know, the if you build it, they will come mode, it just doesn't work anymore. So I really feel that that's where this fits. I agree with you. I think we need to be flexible, I think we need to be creative, we need to be engaging with new partners, and we need to be looking for interesting and alternative ways to offer our product. I think the switch to online helps part of that. But again, if you can get a captive audience in a particular company's classroom to go offer a course, even if it's just to offer a speech class, because they feel that they need some soft skills, or they need some writing skills, or whatever the case might be, there are opportunities out there. And a big part of the SEM plan will focus on finding these opportunities and fostering these partnerships and looking for new and innovative ways to get students through our doors, even if perhaps they don't set foot on our campus.
Or even too, if you do on-campus at the work environment, at their community. You know, because like Trustee Morella said, that would help to spirit more. And maybe they would get more credits, you know, since they are being able to get their tuition reimbursed. It would help increase enrollment and their abilities.
I agree, those are excellent points.
Well, Robert, thank you very much for your very, very good presentation, as usual. And you have a good day.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1.2, moment of silence. We have two individuals, Mark Wohl, husband of Dr. Kathy Wohl's in nursing, and Jeannie O'Keefe, cousin of Trustee Maureen Broderick. Thank you very much. And at this time, moving on to recognition of special guests, I get, if anybody's on video, I guess they're all special guests. And at this time, recognition of outgoing student trustee. Shalma, are you still here?
Well, I'm here.
You are here. Well, I know you can't see it, well, maybe you can see it. But this is for you. This is for you, and we'll get it to you sooner or later. It's Joliet Junior College, 1901, presented to Shalma Moran in recognition of outstanding service to the students of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College Student Trustee, April 2019 to April 2020. And thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm trying not to get emotional, since we're in a board meeting. It's been a very, you know, bumpy beginning, a lot of firsts for me. And I'm just thankful to, you know, administration, to Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Farmer, Pam, who got me into this, I see she's on too, Joan for always helping and coordinating, you know, the board members who always gave me tips, everybody who helped me along the way in my journey as student trustee, this one year that went by fast and kind of slow at times. But I'm just thankful and I hope to keep doing great things and being involved. Thank you so much.
Well, we hope to see you soon.
Yeah, likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shalma.
Next item, 1.3.2, appointment of new student trustee.
I would like to call on Director of Student Activities Pam Dilday to introduce our new student trustee. Pam, are you there?
I was muted, sorry. And at this point, I unmute and my dog barks. Thank you for allowing me to attend tonight's board meeting to introduce our new student trustee and to recognize our outgoing student trustee with Shalma. This year, we had two very qualified students complete the selection process to become student trustee. In the end, Dante Crowder was selected to fulfill this role for the 2020-2021 year. Dante is a psychology major in his second year at JJC. He has been involved on campus in brother-to-brother and also by attending student government and Latinos Unidos meetings this past year. He was nominated for student trustee by Margot Underwood. He attended Joliet Central High School and lives in Joliet currently. I wish him very well in the role. But I also want to take a minute and thank Shalma. She has just completed her year, and to say that she has bloomed where she was planted is an understatement. She began her role as a quiet, semi-reserved student who was excited about the opportunity to be the student trustee. I remember that day very well. She came in to hear about getting involved, but left with a booklet for student trustee. She has blossomed in her role, and she leaves very big shoes for Dante to fill. I am confident, however, that Dante will rise to the challenge and represent the students well with the board. So tonight, we say thank you to Shalma, and we recognize her for a job well done this past year. And we welcome Dante into his role as student trustee, and look at the smile on his face. I wish both of these students the best in whatever the future holds. I also have just a little, slight little announcement. I also want to wish you all well, as June 18th is my last day as Director of Student Activities. It's been a great 24 years at JJC, but I feel it's time for me to do other things that are to be determined. I don't know what the next chapter will be for me, but I do know I will miss our awesome staff and students especially. I know that I'll be back to visit though, because JJC will always hold a special place in my heart. So thank you all very much.
Oh, come on, Pam, 24 years is nothing.
It's enough.
Okay, at this time, I see Dante up there. Can you stand up? Stand up. Raise your hand up and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dante Crowder.
Okay. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Member of the Office of Board of Trustees.
Joliet Junior College.
Joliet Junior College.
Illinois Community College District 525.
Illinois Community College District 525.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay. Welcome, welcome. Anything you want to say, Dante?
I'm really excited for the role that I'm about to fill. I'm super excited to get to represent students, and I can't wait to do my best.
Wonderful. Alrighty. Moving on, selected reports. We have some resolutions. We're going to lump together 1.4.1, approval of resolution honoring retiree Tom Feldman. 1.4.2, resolution honoring retiree John Grippis. 1.4.3, resolution honoring retiree Clay Kirkland. And 1.4.4, resolution honoring retiree Kathleen Wohl. And one more. The 1.4.5, resolution honoring retiree Barbara Butler.
Salute.
We have a motion and a second. Joan, call her over, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Gyan?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morellis?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Moving on, item 1.4.6, faculty union report. Dr. Marsink is a written report that we have. Item 1.4.7, adjunct faculty union. Laura Lisco, no report. Moving on, 1.5.1 minutes. Approval of minutes of regular monthly meeting of April 29th. If there are no additions or corrections, can I have a motion and a second? Motion and a second. Joan, call her role, please.
Washington? Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 1.6, communications. Any further communications, Mr. Chairman?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
All right, item 1.7, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Joan, call her role, please.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 1.8.1, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I do want something removed from it, though.
I'm sorry?
I said, I do want something removed from it. Now that you have a first and a second. Item 4.2, all of 4.2, under 4.2.1, 4.2.2, 4.2.3.
I also have some items.
Go ahead.
Uh, item, just because I want discussion, 8.2 and 8.3, please. Um, moving forward, Chairman Wanderlech, before we go right to approving the consent agenda, could you just allow us, like, let us know this is the time that we can pull items for discussion? We have, you know, some newer trustees and I know there's questions sometimes when we can call things. So if you could just guide us in that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Now, you want item 8.2? 8.2 and 8.3?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Just any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, Joan, call her role, please.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 4.2.1. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Discussion.
I just wanted to know if there's, it could be voted independently instead of just all of us voting it under consent agenda.
I didn't hear that. Okay. All right. Any other further discussion? Joan, call her role, please.
Morales?
I'm going to pass for right now.
O'Connell? O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
No.
Crowder?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
This is 800 and, almost $836,000. There's a lot of workers right there that work without health insurance. Um, I think we need to revisit how we're doing things and not doing a certain way because we've always done it that way. So I'm, and this one, I'm going to vote no.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Thanks, item 4.2.2. Motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
I think that we need to have this as a, a point of reference, that we need to have this brought to the board for the board to know what the cost factors are and what the deductible programs are that are offered. Not just all of a sudden lay it on us even though we've asked for it. So I'm going to say, that's why I'm bringing it out here now.
Any further discussion? If not, Joan, call her role, please.
Broderick?
What'd you say? Did you say me? No.
Crowder?
Yes.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Dan O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Item 4.2.3. Motion and a second, please.
Motion?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Just wanted it out there again.
Discussion. No discussion on 4.2.3? Not Joan.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
No.
Crowder?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes. Next item, 8.2. Old Business Board Policies. I have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do not need a motion. It is not up for approval.
All right.
We just need to discuss.
They are, uh... Trustee Morales, I think you pulled these?
Yes, thank you. Okay, good. So I'm glad they're not up for voting. We, as trustee Broderick always mentions, we are a policy-making board. We set policy and these are policies. And I've questioned them, um, just on my own, like, why we don't really discuss these when they're up for different readings. They're included in our, in our package. I don't believe that we take the time as a board to discuss this amongst each other. Maybe we, we ask our questions independently, but I would like to see us, you know, discuss this more as, as a team, as, as a board. So having said that, I think the one I pulled was, what did I say, 8.2?
8.2 and 8.3.
Okay. So I see that a lot of things have been scratched off on 8.2, like the 10-month positions, our prorated, um, holidays, all the things with asterisks were, were, were deleted. Were being stricken. So can, can somebody tell me how this policy exactly is changing? Because there's a lot of changes. What is the final policy? What are we setting with 8.2?
Actually, the policy, it's more of a formatting and some of the changes are there. The benefits that are listed are ones that are currently in play or that have been the existing benefits. The only change that's really changed was the addition of the VSP. We had a, a different dental, I'm sorry, vision renewal. But everything else in terms of the fringe benefits are ones that have currently been in existence. The formatting, though, it's changed to, to make it more readable and understandable.
Okay, so this is for vision buy-up insurance, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's fine. So eight, I'm okay with 8.2. Can we move forward to 8.3?
Yes.
Okay. So this one, the fringe benefits, this is for full-time and it's for non-union staff. So because it's non-union, we didn't have to negotiate this, correct, Melinda?
So this is the language you talked about before that's in the faculty contract. And it was brought up at negotiation. So years ago, many years ago, I'm not sure, it's put in the faculty contract that any benefits have to be negotiated, whether they're union or in the faculty. Has a discretion to vote on that. So it does impact if there's changes, benefits for those of us not in the union. So that was presented, my understanding, to not have that language this time and that it was not identified as an interest that the faculty union wanted to approve. So we do have to, even though these are non-union benefits, if it, if it is benefits that exist that will affect everyone else, common benefits across the population, whether they are union or non-union, it does still require that buy-in per that language.
Okay. So having said that, thank you for, for enlightening me with that. For vacation, you know, it seems fair for the first 10 years, I'm sorry, for the first five years, it's 10 days. It's pretty common, actually. We don't do like an accrued per pay period where people accrue like 3.08 hours per pay period and they take it. If they have it accrued, they can take it. If it's not accrued, they cannot take it. So we're not, we're not using that model, correct?
We do accrue vacation. We do give it to you upfront, but if you leave, we calculate what the accrue would have been at the time that you left. And so if you have used more than you would have accrued, you would have to pay that back. Some of the challenges that we hope to rectify with our workday system is the ability to see that in real time for employees so they can know what they've accrued versus the paper process we have today. But you, we do accrue.
Okay, thank you. And then, but here's the next part. So then it says from six-plus years, we, it says here, per fiscal year, 20 days. How are we administering the 20 days? Is that on the accrue basis also?
Yes.
Okay, but it's up to 20 days then, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now here's the, the part that I really, I, I really struggle to wrap my mind around how we're so generous with our sick leave because we're giving employees right off the bat. It looks like 20 days. Is that correct?
Yes.
I've, okay, places I've worked, we get maybe three sick days per year. And then, here's the thing, it's not a use it or lose it. It looks like we can, they can, employees can carry it over, right? And year after year after, and just bank these sick days, right?
They can carry it over up to a maximum and then they would stop accruing after they reach that maximum. And I, I know this is something that has been brought up before several times and we've talked about this as well. So this is again, one of those areas that is the subject of negotiations. We were successful in, in some of the negotiations to reduce the sick leave time or accumulations because they were higher than what you're seeing for, in the union, for some of the unions.
Yeah, 380 days, it, it really, it, it burdens the college financially to have to pay this out when we get to that point.
Sick time is not paid out, only vacation.
So we don't pay sick time. So, but they can take 300, they can take a year off sick, right? If they accumulated 365 days.
Well, so some of it differs by contract, but one of the things that we did do in our sick leave policies is say that after a year, you would not be able to use sick time unless it is approved under ADA.
Okay. Is that in this, is that in this policy?
Well, this is the fringe policy, so it's in the sick and leave policy. Which was re, um, in some of the early versions, in the early in the year.
Okay, so wait a minute. You said it's not in the fringe policy, but it's in the sick and leave policy?
That actually explains sick leave and how you use it.
Okay, I, I don't understand why it's not in the, why don't we have that language in the fringe policy?
So this, that tells you that you do get the fringe of sick time, but the, the stipulations or requirements for sick, use of sick time and how long you can have it and all those things, board-donated, non-board, that is in the leave, the sick, sick leave policy. Not in this one that talks about all the benefits.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. So again, thank you and I guess we can move forward. Thank you.
Melinda, I just want to ask you, is it, what's the industry average for colleges in the area? Is it similar to this policy or what? Just out of curiosity.
Yes. I know it was said earlier, but we did do full benchmarking and comparison and we're right along in line with our, our peers, our peer colleges.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Morales. Thank you, Melinda. We have a motion and a second?
We don't need that.
We don't need that.
We don't need to vote on this. That's right. Okay. Information only. Eighth, approval of third reading. It's in the consent agenda. You've got the first reading. Okay, we're going on to 9.1 reports. JJC Foundation, no report. ICCTA founded, ICCTA written report. Student trustee, no report. Billings and Grounds, written report only. President's report, no report. Chairman's report. I do have a short report. Even though it, it makes me happy not to wear a cap and a gown on Friday, I really pour my heart out to the students that were supposed to be graduating on Friday, May 15th. We'll get you sooner or later. We'll have another graduation. So just hold on. With that, we have a, a need for an executive session under...
You have the sheet. Where's Carl?
Under...
Here.
2C1? 2C1 and 2C5?
And 2C11.
And 2C11. When we come back, there will be no action taken. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Joan, call her role, please. Joan? You're muted, I think.
Morales?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Broderick?
Aye.
Crowder? Crowder?
Aye.
Garcia Guillen?
Yes.
Mahalik?
Yes.
And Wanderlech?
Yes.